Welcome to the Delnor Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. This Tuesday, May 14th. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could you please take the roll?
Commissioner Insgar? Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Cowan?
Here.
Okay. Mayor, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. You have to. And pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take public comments. At this time, any member of the public may address the Solid Waste Management Authority on any matter on or off the agenda. Do we have any public comments? This is. Do you have a public comment?
No rush.
Of course.
Come on up, Eileen.
All right. Eileen Cooper. So, I think we should do all we can to curb the garbage throughout town and encourage recycling. So, I suggest some creative programs. Although I would like garbage, you know, just dump garbage, people to do it responsibly, make it free, put it on the taxes. I don't, you know, put it on taxes, we're taking care of our trash, come to the transfer station, dump for free. That probably won't happen. But perhaps, perhaps we could have a lottery, giving rewards. You remember all the people who got rewards, plaques? Well, I think we would have a lot more participants in cleaning up the garbage throughout town if for all, all groups or persons who go around and get trash in this community for so much pounds or whatever, that they'd be given an entry into a community. What do you, I don't know if you call it lottery, but a raffle? And we have beautiful rewards for them. Throughout town, we get this, that, and, you know, for enhancement. And if you're in a group that picks up a really lot of trash, you get more entries. And every month, we announce a winner of the entry into pickup garbage and recycling also, both. And I think we would get donations. I think we can work the cost of a simple program like that into the cost of trash collection. I think there might be grants and rewards for a program like that that encourages volunteers throughout our community on an everyday basis. And, and make it a part of life. You walk down the street, you take a bag with you, and you clean up, and if you know there's a certain spot in your community, and you're going to get a raffle ticket, and you're going to get honored every single month in this community. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See, none. We'll go on to item number two, since number one, there is no items under. Transfer station discussion and possible action regarding transfer station operations. Change order number 28, adjusting rates for brush materials based on changes to CPI. Mr. Ward?
Staff have been in discussions with Hambro WSG for the last several months, working on trying to adjust the brush rates. For the past several years, yard debris has been processed at Rogue Disposal Transfer Station. So, the initial rates that were set up, we're presuming that the yard debris would continue to be processed at the Hambro facility just down the street from the transfer station. And it hasn't been that way for several years. So, that's a lot of the instigation for this rate adjustment request. And the demand for finished compost has dropped in the past few years, and there are fewer facilities willing to keep the door open for Delnor materials. So, Hambro has presented to staff information regarding the relative costs for alternative facilities. And I've included, on the other side of the letter, you'll see a comparison sheet showing different facilities, different locations, distances. But you can see that the Rogue Valley facility is a relatively close and cost-effective choice. And although those rates will go up, I think I wanted to point out mostly that part of the reason why this seemed like a reasonable request is if you look at how the rates have changed over the years, you'll see the effective day fees. And then, just last year, we were under change order 27. So, again, you look at the sheet on the other side of that letter, you'll see that as of last year, we're at $9 for the operations fee, $4.95 for transport, and $21.43 for disposal or recovery. So, adjusting those rates, we're looking at just essentially what it would be for adjusting the operations fees. So, that hasn't changed. We're changing the transport in a significant way because it's being transported to a different facility. The actual disposal or recovery amount is going down from what it was. So, on the whole, this seemed like a justified cost increase. So, that is the nature of change order 28, in addition to the changes based on CPI, which are already enshrined within our agreement. The only other thing I would mention is that there is an adjustment also to the stumps rate, although stumps will be managed as trash. So, we didn't have the odd situation where stumps were actually cheaper than the rest of brush. Those were adjusted also. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, gentlemen?
So, looking on the sheet that you provided us up here, is there, is there a place on here, just quickly, so I make sure I'm looking at the right things, that I can compare what the actual customer cost is going to be to where it is today and to what, what they are going to experience with, you know, I'm just thinking of a person bringing in brush.
Right. So, today, it is 35, 38. Well, I'm sorry, actually, this isn't, this just shows the fees paid to Hambro. So, it actually doesn't show the current rates that I have already prepared, but for the next meeting. The payment to Hambro will change from today, 35, 38 per ton, to 49, 17 per ton. And the rate will go to approximately $75. But I'm, again, I want to look at the actual numbers, and I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
And what is it now?
It, it's currently about $55 a ton, I think. So, it's going up about 20 bucks.
Okay.
But it still will be approximately half the price of the per-ton price for trash. So, there's still definitely an incentive to keep your brush separate from the rest of your trash.
Okay. Thank you.
Clear as mud? Commissioner Howard?
No, it's not. Sorry, missed the last meeting, so I'm trying to catch up on the study session sheet here.
No, actually, I'm sorry, I do have that information in front of me. If you look, but it's on the rate ordinance. If you look at the second to last page, you'll see the transfer station rates effective starting in July 19. And you'll see the rate for brush is going from 53.07 currently to 73.95. So, it's approximately a 40% increase.
What page is that?
That is Schedule B, transfer station rates, second to the last page of your agenda packet.
Order 28 on top? No, I just, I don't have any other page before it goes to 3.1, I'm sorry. Maybe my packet's not complete. No, I don't have that page.
So, you'll see there are rates here that are currently charged, and that's what they're thinking about.
It's the Schedule B?
Yes, Schedule B.
What percentage increase is this?
It's approximately a, well, it depends how you, for the customer, it's a 39.3% increase.
Jesus Christ, really?
Yes, it is.
And this is based on CPI?
No, no. This is, this is based on the change in how yard debris is processed. It used to be processed just down the street from the transfer.
Well, I know where it used to be processed, I took tons of it.
Well, now it's going up because they're moving it.
To where?
Transport. So, look at on this one, see how your transport just jumped?
So, the customer, again, is going to see a 39% increase?
That's correct. That is correct.
Because we're hauling it to Rogue?
That's correct.
Can we hear some from our guests in the audience, please? I'd love to hear some more justification behind this. Please, Dave, enlighten me, because I need an education.
Okay, not a problem. Just got a serious change in what's happening, the transportation cost was $40 and 40 cents, I think, or?
The transportation cost, let me get those out. I have $4.95. Okay, $4.95, and that was to haul the green waste from the transfer station to Hambro. Which really wasn't too bad of a haul. At that time, Hambro had the vision of composting that material on-site. They had a chipper, a crew that did that, and that didn't turn out to be, it was a disaster. It didn't even come close to covering costs. And that's the problem with compost. So, the next step was to try to get rid of it. We occasionally attempted to haul it to Blue Lake, where they had a facility composting down there. West Green still has a facility composting down there, and we can haul it down there. I believe he'll, we can pay him $90 to get rid of the green waste there. By far, the cheapest thing we've found to do is to take it to Rogue, where the haul costs are sizable, significantly more sizable than the $4.95, it's costing us $39.65 to haul it to Rogue, Rogue Compost. Our handling costs are now down, we're just charging $1.64 to handle the compost on-site. As of July 1st, Rogue Disposal, Rogue Compost, will be charging us $10 to get rid of it. And in July 1st of 2020, it'll go up to $15 a ton. And July 1st of 2021, it'll go up to $20 a ton.
Guess I'm not as prepared as I need to be to do a good job to debate some of these costs right now, David. I'd love to explore this a little bit more. It just seems astronomical to go up close to 40%. But you're telling me is that?
We're asking for a, yes, we're asking for a raise. If we're looking at other alternatives, and it's up to you to give us that raise or not give us that raise. We, and necessity is the mother of invention. So, if we're stuck with this.
What's your break-even cost?
Pardon?
Can you tell me your break-even cost?
Twenty-nine cents.
And what's the proposed?
It's less than that, sir. It's 49.17 is what they're proposing.
Thanks, David, I appreciate you being honest with me, and more importantly, getting this out in the open. It's a head-scratcher for me that these rates are going up, but needed that information in order to make sound decisions.
Well, we, Hambro's tried and tried, and we continue to try. We're hoping that within the next year or two, we've come up with a bit of a solution, at least to mitigate some of these costs. We're looking at different locations still to take it to, and a way of handling it on-site here in Crescent City. But we don't have it at this point.
All right, David.
And the best thing about Rogue Disposal, there are other sites, and we can sort and take it somewhere, but we know we can take it there. So, we have to have a destination for it. That was one of the problems we had when we were attempting to recycle on our site. Cal recycle mandates that it can only sit for six months. Well, in Delnor County, it doesn't compost very well in six months, in addition to the fact that we can't get rid of the 18,000 pounds of green waste that come in to us. So, appreciate your consideration.
No, I appreciate you being forthright with it. Just a big number to stomach. Thank you.
Are you doing, what questions?
No, I don't have any other questions. Well, concern, I guess, and comment, and I shared my concerns with Mr. Ward, is that when we were, when we were facing hurdles with our, with our contractors or franchisees previously, we, with recology, and it's a complete separate issue, I understand that. But there was a lot more engagement on the board level of an ad hoc, we looked at things. And so, I think that maybe, without speaking for Mr. Howard, the lack of us being as prepared, maybe, for all this is the fact that we really haven't, not that, I haven't, I haven't dived down into this like I did in other negotiations. So, it does seem like you're, there's, it seems more like a number from that process of just not being part of the conversation. So, I think that education, as Mr. Howard said, is always good for us to know what we're doing.
And I'd like to be a little bit more prudent about these decision-making processes, especially with a potential 39% increase to our customers. Whether it's a committee format that we go into discussion on or not, I'd love to have a little bit more detailed discussion with Hambro on these. The problem is, is that you guys are faced with the immediate need to change based on current costs. You're not breaking even. Fortunately, this cart's before the horse. And you've got deadlines, I think, based on what David's saying. Another increase up to $10, 2020, and then another increase to $15 in 2021? If I heard that correctly?
No, we're 10 now. We're 10 this July, 2020, 15, 2021, 20.
So, yeah, we're a little behind.
Chris, just add, Joel Wallen, Hambro WSG, for the record. Just to add a little bit, so if you think about, we can only haul to them 12 to 14 tons at a time, and $30 a ton. Then you're going to Medford and back. I think maybe that'll help you, you know, knowing about trucking.
What's limiting your ton haulage?
You have to haul the high-site end dump, and it's not?
The weight of the end dump is prohibiting you from getting a full 25 tons on there?
That's all you can get, you volume out.
Because of it's not compressed?
Exactly. It's not densified.
That did not make sense to me. Back up.
Sorry.
I'm dead to him because he does trucking, so explain that to me. It's just a smaller load, for the, for the reason being?
Right. When you, when you look at $30 a ton, just times 10 tons, that's $300. For a truck to go that many miles and back, you can do the math and figure out what the per-mile rate is, and it's way down. It's below the market rate. So, again, with the, with the number we came up with, we were just trying to be fair. One of the things we were trying to achieve was that the rate didn't make sense anymore. The transportation element was only the, you know, few dollars for going to Hambro, and not realistic. And what we're trying to do is make it more of a realistic rate, because for me, Dave has ideas that Hambro in the future is going to do some other things. We may, we may not. But for me, as a manager of the transfer station, I got to look long-term. I may be hauling the green waste out of the community forever.
Sure.
So.
That makes sense. I don't know if you want to go to public comment, I've got a few more things to say.
Go for it. Keep talking. You want to go to public comment?
No. I want to hear from the public.
Okay.
I saw somebody getting antsy out there.
Eileen wants to talk, come on up.
This is the kind of thing that makes me really insane. I'm glad you brought it up, because we are hauling, spending money to haul, burning fossil fuels to haul a useful, useful material. We have fallen way short of our industrial park goals, encouraging recycling of materials here in this community. Why, I see my, my neighbors all around me buying chipped woods products from Home Depot, and that gets hauled in here. And then, we're paying to haul this stuff out. Cuckoo. Every time we haul something useful out of this community, we are doing a grave disservice to this planet right now. And we need to start taking these kinds of issues very seriously. Every community needs to do a better job in using what they have, make our lives better, get a shipping situation, put more people to work doing this, and sell the product and make a profit instead of burning fossil fuels to take it out of this community. I just, it drives me nuts. And we need to get busy on these things. You know, we, we only go around the sun so many days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Commissioner Howard?
Director Ward? The state continues to put us in a rock and a hard place up here. Hambro's got something to deal with, which is the green waste. They have tried in the past to deal with it. They have faced, if I recall correctly, Air Resources Board fines from even attempting to compost the vegetation on their facility at the old Hambro site. I feel like we're going around in circles here, that there's no good solution for us at this point in time. I would love for us to be in a position to where we could provide reduced rates for our customers that want to haul to the transfer station. But at the same time, I want to give Hambro the tools that are necessary to have a marketable product, which they've tried to have in the past, and it's failed miserably, for whatever reason. What do we do? What do we in Delnor County do with green waste that will be continuing to build up here as long as we have trees in the forest and lots of water to feed them?
There's a lot to be said about that particular topic. And you're absolutely correct in that we do have specific fundamental challenges, and that we're relatively small, have a relatively small population, have a lot of rainfall, are not very close to the markets, and have an abundance of composted manure, which is a competing product to any finished compost you could have. And so, that's actually a very fundamental market-based problem, which is no matter how you produce a end-use compost material, your market for that compost are going to be the people who are landscapers, are going to be interested in the nutrients associated with that compost. And competing against, essentially, drive your truck up to the dairy, and they'll load it up with as much manure as you want, and you will drive away for cheap cost. You can't compost for less than that. You can't. And so, we have those fundamental challenges. Also, compared to other communities, in order to compost year-round, as Dave was implying, you need to do it under our roof in order to meet the California regulations. So, all of those things increase our cost, decrease our market competitiveness. And concurrently, you also have the market forces of compost demand has declined since marijuana's become legalized, or at least that's what I hear reports of. And so, we do have these fundamental challenges. As a solid waste agency, it's been, I've been reminded at various times that we are a public service. And part of our service is to make sure that those services continue to be provided in a way, and rates that are reasonable and make sense. And so, I was trying to navigate this with our contractors and recognize that their costs have changed and gone up, and that we still want to keep a reduced rate for brush relative to trash, so that we're encouraging people to continue to separate those brush so that those nutrients can be recovered. Regarding the desire to have materials processed locally and marketed, I absolutely share that desire. However, there are economies of scale. And so, for instance, when you're trying to look at, say, using a tub grinder, which is a very common piece of equipment used in processing these materials, we don't have a tub grinder locally. So, it costs money to move the tub grinder up here, it costs money to manage the staff necessary to run the tub grinder. And then, when you grind something like the head of a sledgehammer, then you have to replace all those hammers. And it's a very expensive prospect, and not simple, is the short of it. And while we may be able to teach backyard composting, that doesn't solve our municipal compost needs. And so, this is, I think, the best option in the short to medium term, and we'll continue to look at this issue. And you're absolutely right, the regulations on this are changing, and it's right that we keep an eye on those. But in the short of it, I don't have a better solution than this one.
I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road.
No, and just in, obviously hindsight's always 20/20, right? It probably would have done us all well if, when we were looking three years ago with Hambro with this long-term extension, that we started talking about some, at that point in time, some of the challenges, obviously, that Hambro was already facing. We should have been addressing this three years, in some senses, because it sounds to me like it's been a money loser for all this time. We should have, we should have, I just, when we were already talking about this long-term relationship because of establishing the White City, I mean, when you talk about long-term relationships, you have to also talk about the things that aren't working so good that you want to make better.
Well, at the time, to be fair, though, we did at one point put out an RFP and ask for proposals for having a local composting yard, and Hambro WSG did put in a proposal. But the proposed rates to provide that service here were more than our existing rates at the, for brush at the transfer station. And so, the board at the time gave that proposal a pass, because it was more expensive. So, that choice will continue to be available. We can do more local things, and it will cost more.
Okay.
Do we need to take action on this today?
We do. In order to have the rate ordinance become effective, and the rates go into effect on July 1, as we would like, then part of what we need to have happen is we need to have change order 28 passed in some form, change order 17 passed in some form, and introducing and reading the title of the ordinance.
So that, that it can be adopted in our regular?
At our regular meeting on the 21st, correct, sir?
And, and from adoption of, the final adoption of the ordinance to implementation, what's required?
At least 30 days. So, currently, we're?
Basically, it has to be done before May 31st, if we're going to get July 1.
Correct, sir.
Yeah, okay. So, if we don't introduce this today, if we, and? So if we don't introduce this today, if we, and, and for, let's just hypothetically, if we did that, and it came back to our regular meeting, and we acted, then we would have to have another special meeting before the end of the month if we wanted this to stay on track.
I think that's correct, yes.
You're sitting there with your hand up. You've already spoken on this. Do you want to wait to the next?
One more short thing.
Thank you very much. There is a difference between composting and just, and reengineering what people separating differently. And you have the rate for the brush and the grass going up. That can be just chipped. It's not compost. People are putting, you can chip stuff from Walmart all over their lawns all the time. Why not just make a, a chipped stuff pile, chop it up, and sell it? And also, you can work with the dairy. You can make a complete nutrient product that's better than just manure. You can mix it with some of these materials and, and make a great product. You know, there are avenues. There's creativity that we need, and we need to restructure fundamentally. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we either put it off, and you guys, we do another special meeting? We go forward and we continue to look at options?
Well, I, we don't have the time to put it off right now. We just don't. That's for certain.
That's why we're here today.
But I want to make sure that this board, or at least a committee of this board, is revisiting this issue with Hambro to find, hopefully, what Ward talked about, short and medium-term solutions, which is, that's all this is. But more of a long-term solution that allows some incentive for them to invest in the appropriate infrastructure, whatever that might look like, to get us on the path for a long-term solution. But obviously, that's a huge financial hit to any business looking to go into composting or some other form of resellable product from wood and yard waste. It's not an easy task.
It's not. And, and I'd like to acknowledge that previously, you have asked that we do a, a study session item on how organics regulation in California is changing. And I still think that that's appropriate.
Yeah, clearly.
But we won't be able to prepare that, provide it, respond to it in a timeline that affects this choice.
Not in this amount of time. Chair, how do you want us to proceed?
I need a motion. Do you want to take action? Do you want to, we have to take action on Change Order 28? So I need discussion of possible action regarding transfer station operation change order 28. This is what we have right here.
This is just to open it up?
Delmarque collection rate for changes...
This is to open up for public hearing?
Uh, no, but, no, the, no, the public hearing won't happen until we deal with the ordinance on the 21st. At this point, we're just addressing the Change Order 28, and there's no public hearing for that.
I'd move to approve the Change Order 28 this time. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more public comment?
You've had enough.
Can you pull the hold, please? Commissioner Enscore?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to 3.1, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Collections, Change Order 17, Adjusting, Adjusting Recology's Delmarque Collection Rates for Changes in Processing Brush and Based on Changes to CPI.
So this change order, it does three things. It adjusts based on CPI, which is already in our agreement. It adjusts based on the 6.12% increase approved under Change Order 16 associated with the increased processing costs. It adjusts the brush rates because of the changes that were just approved under Change Order 28. And that's what they, that's what this change order does.
Do you approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment on item number 3.1? See? Okay.
Commissioner Enscore?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. Brings us to item 4.1, Introduce and Waive Full Reading and Read by Title Only Authority Ordinance 2019-01, Increasing Brush Rates and Increasing Collection Rates to Address Increased Costs to Process and Market Brush and Recyclable Materials and Adjustable, or Adjusting Rates.
For the Delmarque County Transfer Station, Klamath Transfer Station, and the Gasky Transfer Station. Sorry, it's a long title. I'm sorry.
For all of the Cal, yeah, Delmarque County Transfer Station, Klamath Transfer Station, and the Gasky Transfer Station.
So this is our annual way to implement rates. This board approves the maximum rates that Recology can charge and the rates that are charged at the Delmarque County Transfer Station, the Gasky Transfer Station, and the Klamath Transfer Station. And those change orders that you just approved adjust the payments to our contractors. This essentially sets the rates for all customers. And if you look at the back pages of this, you'll see the, you have not only a comparison of our proposed future rates compared to Humboldt County and Curry County, demonstrating that our rates, even after these adjustments, will continue to be equal to or lower than any other facility in the region. And you'll also see the rate sheets and include the comparison to the 2018 rates. So you can see that most rates are increased, at the transfer station are increasing about 1.6%, except for the brush rates. And in terms of collection rates, generally, collection rates, because of those increased processing costs, are going up by 7.8%, except for the case of brush, in which they're going up quite a bit more. Or the 20-gallon cart service is also being phased out, so those rates for new customers would go up. Though, it's, it's a fuzzy line because essentially, the, the lowest service you can get under, with Recology now, is a 30-gallon can, so it's not fair to compare to the 20-gallon service anymore. I'd be happy to answer questions, but essentially, the reason why we have to adopt an ordinance instead of a resolution in this case is because of the changes to the brush rates.
Any questions, gentlemen?
I just have one question that occurred to me, Mr. Ward. If, if we had adopted this new brush rate, and then a year from now, there is a, a, a brand-new startup company that says, "We will take all of your green waste," and it's, and it comes in less than where we are now. What are our options as far as addressing that if it no longer is a, a justifiable expense for our partner?
I, I think there would be both a change order and a rate ordinance because that would be changing how those materials would be managed.
And under our contract, we would be able to do that in reducing...
Yes.
...our, our fees to them?
Yes.
Or, yeah.
If, if such an opportunity arose, yes, there would be.
Okay, just want to make sure.
No, that's a good question.
Never know.
Never know.
Well, and actually, there is...
Eileen may open a company.
Uh, under our contracts, we often have in there, and I, I think it's in both the Hambro and the Recology contract, but it is a cost-reduction incentive, essentially. If there's a way that we can save costs, then we offer an incentive to our contractors to help identify those opportunities.
All right, excellent. Okay. Oh, Chair, then I, I make motion we approve ordinance, or introduce a way of full-by-full reading ordinance, number 201901, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Delmarque Solid Waste Management Authority, Increasing Maximum Collection Rates, Transfer Station Rates, and Transfer Station Disposal Fees.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Enscore?
Yes.
Commissioner Waller?
Yes.
Chair Cowan?
Yes. That concludes our meeting today, and we'll see everybody next week on Tuesday at 4:00 PM on the 21st. Have a good week.
Thank you.